Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Whedon. I'm the Director of Service Delivery for Eastbourne Borough Council and Lewis District Councils. I'm here today, really pleased to be here at this Making Natural History event to talk to you from a local authority perspective, really, about Eastbourne's enviable location, surrounded by some unique habitats, including marine conservation area, ancient downlands, marshlands. I'd like to explore some of the challenges we face as a local authority maintaining and managing these unique habitats, and also some of the budgetary constraints we have in a post-COVID world. But to finish, I'd like to focus on the myriad of opportunities, I think there are, but if by everyone working together, that we can leave a lasting environmental legacy for future generations. So that's an iconic image I'm sure everyone is aware of, Beechhead, and the chalked downlands in the background. But Beechhead is within a marine conservation zone. This was announced by the government on the 31st of May 2019, and it's an inshore site that covers an area of 195. So that is the marine conservation area that surrounds the whole of Eastbourne, a really unique area. So why are these important? Well, these and other types of marine conservation areas form the UK's contribution to an international network of protected sites. The network will help deliver the government's vision of a clean, healthy, safe, productive and biologically diverse ocean and seas. As you see from the previous photo, Beechhead has a sandstone chalk reef system, which provides a home for a wide range of species between Beechhead and Hollywell. So that's this area here, Beechhead to Hollywell. A chalk reef extends from the sub-tidal area and up to the coast of White Cliffs, forming sheltered rock pools at low tide. I'm sure if any of you have been down there at low tide, you are very aware of those rock pools. The soft chalk is pitted by holes created by rock boring pittocks. These holes can also house crabs, sponges and worms. The chalk extended above the high watermark contains unique communities of seaweeds and where the chalk cliffs and sea claves are splashed by waves. Marine chalk is a globally rare habitat and a large proportion of this is found in the UK. The whole site itself is considered to be an important nursery area for doversail, place and herin. The sub-tidal sand allows the fish to camouflage themselves whilst also provides excellent food for the adult fish to prey. So a really internationally important area of marine conservation just off the coast of our beautiful town. The following photos taken by my teams when they're out working, these are some cormets at Fallen Sands. The UK holds an internationally important number of wintering birds, absolutely crucial grounds for them to be on and proof that the marine conservation zone is doing just what we need it to do. But along with the conservation zone, obviously, Eastbourne is subject to shingle drift, and people are familiar with this activity on the beach in the summer when the shingle is replaced. It not only helps with the shingle drift as it drifts around the coast, it protects the town from flooding in severe winds. It would be even more important, and later on in the presentation, I'll touch on climate change, and these flood defence works will be crucial as sea levels rise. If we move from the marine conservation area and up the cliffs, we've obviously got the Eastbourne Downland Estate. Again, a unique piece of ancient habitat. In this, it's in this form due to thousands of years of grazing. It has a unique chalk grassland, and it's at the easternmost end of the South Downs National Park. It was bought by the public following a threat to its beauty spots of Beechhead in 1926, and it led to an act of parliament, and it is now currently owned and managed on behalf of the public by us at Eastbourne Borough Council. We have a downland management plan which ensures that we manage the area for leaving that legacy that we need for future generations. Again, this is, this is an area on the downland called Forty Acre Meadow, an area where you see significant wildflower that can only grow on that unique chalk grassland. This will be, it's suitable for ground nesting birds, and it requires careful management and a careful mowing regime to allow these wildflowers to flourish. This is a lady orchid. Now, this was taken in May this year, and it's the only lady orchid that was seen in East Sussex this year. We won't give the location because as everyone will know, it is illegal to dig up wildflowers, but we do get some issues with people trying to collect orchids, given their rarity. But for having the only one in East Sussex shows how the downland management plan that my team implements is providing that rich benefit for flowers. Not only does the downland management plan provide benefit and create those wildflowers, it allows us to attract a number of wildlife and rare birds. This is a lynet, and this was taken this year at Belt Toot. Now, this is a really important picture that the team took because the lynet's population has declined in the UK between 1970 and 2014 by 57%. So to have, again, so to have this seen on our downland estate is a testament to the many years of work that has gone in maintaining this unique habitat. Again, lovely photo taken this spring, and they are early purple orchids, very rare orchid again, and cow slips. And that's on the bank near Belt Toot, for people who know Eastbourne, that's near the S bends. So we're really pleased that we have such a wide range of different wildflowers flourishing on our downland estate. But down in the state isn't just wildflowers in nature. It has several sites of scientific special interest in there, including the last one made Willington Down, which was designated in 1986. There's a chalk aquifer underneath the downland estate, which is part of a larger natural supply that provides drinking water for 700,000 properties in the region. The downland estate falls into the government-designated nitrate vulnerable zone. That means our management of the estate and the farms' management of their land doesn't want to see nitrates, such as fertiliser, added to the ground as it goes into the water supply. As I mentioned earlier, on the 12th of November 2009, the South Downs National Park was created, and this includes the whole of the Eastbourne Downland Estate. We're the gateway to the South Downs National Park at Beechhead, and the park is managed by the South Downs National Park Authority, which gives it further legal standing and further protection, which we welcome. The Countryside Commission, which is the predecessor of Natural England, who we work with now, designated this whole area, the whole coastal part of the estate, as the country's first ever stretch of heritage coast. This designation is for coast that is of particular natural beauty or importance, and is managed to preserve this largely undeveloped beauty. And that heritage coast forms the backbone of our management plan as we work forwards. The downland estate as a whole, there is also included in the Sussex Downs area of outstanding natural beauty, designated by the Countryside Commission on the 22nd of June 1965. So we've got a rich heritage of designations that not only show that we're managing the downland as it should be managed, but provides that further protection, so it is kept in this way as a gift to future generations. It's also been awarded a Plant Important Areas in recognition, as you can see in the photo, of the variety and ecological value of plant life in the area. We have three farms on the downland estate, and as part of the Rural Development Programme for England, we get funds transferred from the central government to help maintain and improve the estate and farm in a sustainable way. And finally, the whole downland state is known as a regionally important geomorphical site for the country. So we have protection in all sorts of different legislation, and again, that governs the work the teams do in maintaining this estate. Within the estate, and if you walk round, you can see the outlines at Belt Two and other places, there are 32 separate scheduled ancient monuments. These are Bronze Age monuments, which are part of the rich historic landscape that has always been there on the downland estate. So there, in the south, we have a marine conservation area, and then we have the downland estate. And what some people call the green lung of Eastbourne, in the centre of town, off Lockbridge Drive, is you have Eastbourne Park, which is made up of this one, which is Shire Water's Lake, Shire Water Park. And this was close, the creation of this park was closely linked to the building of the Golden Jubilee Way and the development of Shire Water in the mid 90s. The lakes were excavated for floodwater storage. Before this, they are mainly marsh pasture with many man-made drainage channels, as you see on the Pevensey Levels. It was interesting to note that when they were digging out the lakes in Shire Water Park, they did come across the remains of a significant Bronze Age settlement. Some call it the Felix Stow of its time. It was a port, so the sea came right up to here, and there's a port where boats were unloaded, and then the goods were taken up through the South Downs, what is now the South Downs Way, and to other Bronze Age settlements such as Stonehenge. The excavations had a, found a rich load of treasures, including a bronze sickle, which is now in the British Museum. And given the importance of the site, the remains were covered with peat, so they could be preserved for future generations if we want to try and carry out any further excavations. Some call the amount of material and archaeological archaeological goods under that peat, the same sort of finds they found in Sutton Hoo in Suffolk. So it has the potential to be one of the nation's prime archaeological sites. The park is managed by both East Sussex County Council and Eastbourne Borough Council, and again, is managed to provide that rich biodiversity in the centre of town. West Langley Neveils, as I said, makes up the rest of Eastbourne Park. And again, this is managed by our team, and that's an interpretive panel for walkers and people who enjoy to learn about the biodiversity of the park. So they can go down and take a look and have a look round and really take in the completely different biodiversity that's available on a wetland, wet marshland than is in the marine conservation area and on an ancient chalk grassland. That's, excuse me, that is what makes Eastbourne so unique, in our view. So we've got these, we've got these all unique environments that we manage on behalf of the public, and we manage to provide that, as I said at the start, that lasting legacy for our children and future generations. But with any management of any wildlife and any biodiversity, there comes challenges. And you'll be aware that we've had some significant challenges recently that we've had to deal with. There's, I've got a short clip here. There isn't any, there isn't any sound, but if you could hear the sound, it was the sound of a helicopter. This is a helicopter flying over the southern escarpment of the downland estate in the summer of 19. The helicopter was commissioned by the Forestry Commission so they could audit the ash trees which grow on the southern escarpment. And as we go through, I'll point out, so the helicopter is starting at the Willington end of the southern escarpment. As you can see, as the helicopter comes into the Willington End, the start of our woodland at the southern escarpment, this is summer, so you would expect all the trees being full leaf and a lot of green. You can see those brown parts within the woodland. Those are trees which are affected by ash dieback. That is an airborne fungus, and literally it infected the woodland in one season. You can see on that escarpment the impact of that fungus. We're just coming past Willington Golf Course now. And before the Second World War, this whole escarpment would have, would have been grazed. So the ash trees have grown since the grazing stopped. So what you have is a woodland of a single species and a single age of ash trees. Now, obviously, when you're doing, when you're creating a woodland, you want to create a mixed species and a mixed age and mixed size, so that you have a much richer biodiversity. But you can see especially on this bit here, as you come around, as you come around Ratting Estates, quite devastation that has been caused by this airborne fungus. We're not alone in Eastbourne to have to deal with this. It's entered from the continent and has really taken over, taken off in the southeast. But you can see the challenge that we have faced when the Forestry Commission came to us and showed us this film. This is further plantation just down here. You'll notice that's green. That is a semi, that's a mixed species woodland of a different age species than what we have on the southern escarpment. So there's not so much trouble here. But as you can see, as you come behind Cherry Garden Road, on this escarpment here, quite the impact of the ash dieback has had on this part of the town, that the majority of people, when they get up in the morning, can see this southern escarpment. There you have East Dean Road, and the trees all along the side of the road. Now, when a tree gets ash dieback, what happens is the fungus enters it, and it it becomes brittle and prone to failure. So there's a number of footpaths in there. There's a number of trees adjacent to roads and properties. And as we come around the Royal Eastbourne Golf Course, you can see that it has completely taken hold of the majority of the ash trees that we have on that southern escarpment. I mean, that is an environmental challenge, no larger than we have faced. When the team were faced with this, it's the largest challenge we've had in our time working here. If you look at this map, this is the map we use for our forestry work. So we had to put in a management plan to the Forestry Commission to say how we would attempt to deal with that, the issue of ash dieback within our woodlands. So you see each of those green segments is rounded by red, and they're different areas of woodland that we have to carry out different operations on behalf of the Forestry Commission. There's approximately 150 hectares of woodland with ash on that southern escarpment. On a very steep, very steep escarpment, so there's some real issues with access and how, and how we deal with the timber. With works of this size, this is, we have to use forestry machinery. So this is one of the machines that was working last year, that can fell a tree and then strips the branches and it cuts it into three metre lengths. So that it's happy, we started last year at Butts Brow Hill Road and around the youth hostel on, on East Dean Road to create some access points in for the works that we have to do over the following years. We have a five-year plan to carry out these works. And obviously, when we're doing, when we're working in certain areas, we obviously have to close off areas of the woodland due to the safety of these large machines working in there. This is a shot last year of Butts Brow. If anyone knows Butts Brow Lane, this is the type of activity you had to do. All these ash trees that you can see on the banks are dead, and all have potential to fall and fail onto cars coming up Butts Brow. So it was deemed a real priority that we did this area. We had to close Butts Brow Lane for approximately a month while we did the work. And we took the timber out and stacked it, ready for collection. Now, obviously, this type of machinery is quite expensive, and so we have to find a way of being able to meet this challenge of felling trees which pose a danger to woodland users and a danger to roads, and it has no biodiversity value now due to the ash dieback. And how do we fund that and any recovery work that we want to do in the future on this, on this land? So another picture of when we're finishing Butts Brow, and you can see just the extent of the work that the team have to carry out just to make that one road safe. This is an area by the Royal Eastbourne Golf Course, and it's on a footpath called the Jubilee Way. This was us at the end of our operations last season. We do the works between November and March. So we're outside bird nesting season, and it minimises the impact on wildlife. So that was behind the Royal Eastbourne Golf Course and Jubilee Way. So they're again taking out all the ash. And this, this is this spring. This is what it looks like this spring, and I think that's the important thing to think about. And we're lucky enough to be working with partners on what's called the Jubilee Way Working Group. And it's what can we do that we can restore these areas where we've taken the ash out? And although it is an environmental challenge, and we are removing a significant number of trees, we see it as an opportunity. It's an opportunity to leave that lasting legacy for future generations. We are able to, where the ash has totally dominated that southern escarpment, we are able to start creating both with natural regeneration and with replanting. We are able to start generating a mixed species woodland for, so that will leave a much richer biodiversity for those future generations. Within the southern escarpment, there are old dew ponds. Dew ponds are what were built into chalk grassland so that grazing animals can drink. We can restore those dew ponds now and leave them in open glades of grassland. So again, we can totally get the habitat back to a much richer biodiversity than it was with a single species ash woodland. And within those woodland site and within this escarpment, there are, as on the downland estate, there are a number of ancient monuments. This is, this will give us the opportunity to restore those ancient monuments, the landscape that they would have been in when they have created that, and that is, we restore it to chalk grassland. These works continue this year. So we're working, this is above prairie heights, where the team are putting it in a roadway so that we're able to extract the timber. And I'll get to why it's really important we need to be able to extract the timber. We're also working on the, on the, just off Beechhead Road and doing the roadway down to the Moorhouse School, as there are a significant number of ash that could fail in that area. We will be having a road closure in that area for about four to six weeks as we carry out those works, given the machinery we have to use. And the reason I've said we needed to extract the timber is that, as I said previously, the cost of that operation is quite significant, having all that number of machinery, people on site and carrying out those essential works so that we can restore the southern escarpment into a rich tapestry of new biodiversity. So to fund it, the timber that we extract in three metre lengths is sent to a power station in Kent where it's chipped and used to create green electricity that powers 20,000 houses adjacent. And the money we receive for that goes towards the overall cost of carrying out that project. It's a massive project, and it will change what that southern escarpment looks like. But from our initial fears of changing it for the worse, we now, with our replanting and regeneration plan, we now know that what we will leave behind will be a much better mixed species woodland for our future generation. Another challenge we face in Eastbourne, Dutch elm disease. Sorry about that, Dutch elm disease. So again, we're in a unique position. Eastbourne's got a stock of mature elms. One of the few places left in the country that has a stock of mature elms ourselves in Brighton. And Brighton have the UK's National Collection of Elms. And this has been, over the years, due to a really, really good Dutch elm disease control policy. And I'll give you some information how we do this shortly. Elms were planted in Eastbourne by Duke of Devonshire's architect, Henry Curry, who designed the town. And as you, as you all beware, the town was, the sand was, the town was designed for gentleman by gentleman. And it really, the town took off after another act of parliament put the train track to town to allow visitors to come down. So the Duke of Devonshire's architect, as you can still see in a number of the areas in town, designed boulevards. And in those boulevards, they planted wheatley elms, of which we still have a significant stock. We've probably got a stock of over 2,000 mature elms in the borough, protected over the years by, from a Dutch elm disease control programme. Now, Dutch elm disease is spread, and the picture on the top left here is is the beetle that overwinters in elm logs that people have or that are lying on the ground. The beetle overwinters in the elm logs and emerges in the spring and flies from the elm log, and it goes to feed at the top of a healthy elm tree. And when it feeds at the top of the healthy elm tree, it takes a fungus that was in the log, Dutch elm disease fungus that was in the log, enters the vascular system of the tree that it's feeding in, which then closes that vascular system down, which you see in this classic picture of some elm trees, the brown leaves that go brown all of a sudden over summer. We've been successful in the past of reducing the impact of Dutch elm disease by ensuring people don't have elm logs, by clearing up dead elms as quickly as possible, and by limiting the amount of beetles, beetle activity there is in the town. That's key to it. This year, unfortunately, the beetles emerge in March. Obviously, this year, in this new world we live with the COVID pandemic, March 23rd signaled the start of lockdown, and that meant non-essential work was stopped, and we were unable to send our crews out to carry out work on trees that were getting infected by Dutch elm disease. This is probably, well, it is the worst season I've known for Dutch elm disease since I arrived in Eastbourne in 2001. I think we've lost over 60 street trees, and you'll see, they're noticeable from the stumps that we leave as we carry out those works. We still, as I say, we still do have a stock of really healthy elms, and we have a number where the Forestry Commission have taken cuttings from because they think they may have a natural resistance. We have done replacement planting with elm-resistant, a Dutch elm-resistant species. And so it's, it's a real crucial bit that we all need to do around how do we limit the use of the, the impact of those beetles? So we talked to people selling timber, and people bringing woods in for wood burning stoves to try and limit that amount of, as I said previously, the ash, the Dutch elm beetle that is flying around. Obviously, we're surrounded by other landowners such as East Sussex County Council, and we need a whole, the whole area to carry out really thorough Dutch elm disease control work for it to be successful for us. So we see our role with our elm trees is limiting as much as possible the amount of infection, and so that we keep our stock of mature elms for as long as possible. On Paradise Drive by the Royal Eastbourne Golf Course, we have a wheatley elm, which has been in the Guinness Book of Records, is the world's tallest wheatley elm. So that is one we are adamant that we must protect from that Dutch elm disease control beetle. Another significant challenge we, we face, and you'd all be aware of David Attenborough's programmes around plastics in the oceans. This is a litter pick that was arranged on my earlier slides at Fallen Sands and talking about the marine conservation area, talking about the importance of that area to support herrings, over soul. This is a litter pit the team arranged with volunteers, a real crucial part of, of our work. Whenever we do volunteer litter picking, we get so many people that want to join us and do litter picking on the beach. That just shows the amount of debris, flotsam that gets washed up on our, our unique beach. And it's something that we will be a constant challenge and something that we will need, always need the help and support of volunteers to be able to deal with. As I said at the start of the presentation, and although this isn't part of natural history, it is part of local authority life now. Covid nineteen has created a perfect storm for us. On that left-hand box, you'll see that our costs have gone up. Demand has gone up for our services. So demand for things like housing benefit where people have been furloughed, demand for help with council tax, demand for help with business rates has all gone up. The political expectation has gone up, both from central and local government, what they, what we need to deliver for people has gone up. And the public expectation of what we can do for them is quite rightly and as it should, has gone up. At the same time as that, the amount of money we can collect is business rates, council tax and rents has gone down. And the money we collect for business rates and council tax, that's what funds the services that, that manage our unique natural habitat. That's where we get the funding from, from our services. Our income has gone down and I'll move on to that in a minute. And savings that we were planning to make were unachievable in the, in the Covid world. And Eastbourne has a unique position where it has a reliance on culture and heritage. If you look at our income, now this income, as well as business rates and council taxes, what pays for our essential frontline services that are responsible for. And you see that grey portion of the pie there at ten point five million. That is a lot, that's how much income we expect to make from culture and heritage in twenty twenty-one. And obviously, with the closure of theatres and the closure of other cultural and heritage sites, that we've suffered significant loss of income, which we have to deal with and still be able to manage our unique natural habitats. Then there's the other challenge, the other challenge that we have. And you, you should, hopefully you'll be aware of the Eastbourne Eco Action Network, a community involvement company that was set up to help us, the, the, the councils made a carbon pledge that we would be carbon net zero, neutral or net zero by twenty thirty. And that is not just Eastbourne Borough Council in its operations, that is Eastbourne as a town. I mean, and that is a massive aspiration for, for anyone involved in the local environment to be able to be able to deal with. The, that carbon neutral pledge is so aspirational. So one percent of the carbon produced in Eastbourne is produced by Eastbourne Borough Council's own activity. So we can deal with our own activity, that's one percent. So this is why this Eastbourne Eco Action Network is, is crucial to providing us that, that support and, and working together as a community to deliver the carbon neutral pledge that we owe to our children and their children to get right. So with that, I just thought, I, I have a quick look at this slide, which is what can we do? So service delivery, the teams I'm responsible for, we've got four main teams. So we've got Homes First. So how can we meet the challenges of finance, meet the challenges of our aspirations for climate change and meet the challenges of how we want to manage our unique environment? Homes First, that manages three thousand properties in Eastbourne and three thousand properties in Lewis. We already started a programme of decarbonising our housing stock. Twenty-five percent of carbon produced in Eastbourne is produced by housing. So we can do our own housing stocking and lead on ways to do that, but it's quite clear that we, we need, again, we need a community action to, to join us if, if we are going to meet that net zero. Environment First is the delivery model in, in service delivery that is, has an in-house waste team in Lewis and has our own waste company in Eastbourne, which took over from the Kia contract. Crucial, crucial team to be able to help with our environmental challenges. Obviously, they, they are responsible for picking up your recycling and we need to drive recycling rates up to sixty percent by twenty thirty. We're presently around about thirty, thirty-four to thirty-six percent recycling. So we need the community to come gather to recycling. But the, the, the team also has a huge fleet and you'll see them when they come to your house. We have a fleet of dust carts that do about sixteen miles to the gallon and they're diesel. So our aspirations is to replace that fleet with a hydrogen fleet within two to three years. And we're working hard with partners such as Brighton Buses, how we can deliver a hydrogen fleet, which not only is better for climate change, is, is so much better for air quality. Neighborhood First is our team that, that produce, that carries out all our workouts in the community. They're the ones that will organise litter picks on, on the beaches. And, and they're the ones that we really want to work with the community to ensure the local environment is, is as we want it to be. And within Customer First, that's where a number of your specialists sit that have been, that are responsible for some of the management that I've highlighted in this report. We have, we obviously manage the parks and gardens. So already we've got a programme of rewilding. How can we move from parks and gardens which are historically being kept quite manicured and, and rewild them for the benefit of biodiversity? They manage the Downland Estate, as you've seen, which is quite a significant piece of work to do, especially if you want to carry on seeing the type of wildflowers and wildlife that we have up there. They're, they're already looking at grass verges. So again, historically over the years, grass, your grass verges on the, on the highway would be mowed ten times a, a year. Within, within Covid, it, it, when we stopped grass mowing, it became apparent quite how much we could rewild some of those verges. So we've got a programme where we get good wildflowers growing in the grass verges to change our management regime on them. This team is responsible for tree planting. I mentioned the loss, loss of elms over the, over the last few years. And this team has planted two, over two thousand street trees. It's an essential both for air quality, climate change, climate warming. And the street trees are a crucial aspect of our fight back for that. They are planting trees which are drought resistant, planting trees with one eye to climate change. So for example, they're using species such as Turkish hazel and, and Swedish whitebeam that provide that biodiversity factor but are more drought resistant. For two thousand street trees is a five hundred thousand pound investment in Eastbourne's landscape. So fantastic piece of work for them. And as I said, that we've got much work to do as we move forward over coastal protection. And how do we meet the challenges of rising sea levels? So that's really where we are at on, for leaving an environmental legacy from the work that the team does on, on behalf of the residents of Eastbourne. I'm really proud of the work they do. Everyone in the team, we've got a first-class team who really have environment at the heart of everything we do. But I think I've seen some questions, so I'll stop sharing, I think. Okay. I've, I've got a question. How do we get the verge outside a house designated as a nature block? If anyone thinks that the verge outside the house is able to be rewilded, if they contact us at customerfirst@eastbourne-lewis-eastbourne.gov.uk, we can certainly look into it. I've got a question around recycling. Is there a problem with recycling percentage? Us not recycling stuff, we could? Or ask buying stuff that cannot be recycled? I think that's a very good question. It's a mixture of, of both. We are at the moment out for consultation, asking residents how they think we can improve that recycling rate. The consultation's available on our website if people want to take part. We've done some analysis and you'll see it in the consultation of the contents of people's residual waste, so the, the, the black bin that gets taken away. And there's quite, there's quite clearly quite a significant amount recycling that happened, that goes into those that could go into the recycling. We had an improvement in recycling rates when we moved from, where we used to do curbside sorting, where we moved to co-mingle. So you put all your recycling into one green bin and that increases the amount of recycling you got. But it's now, now it's really about education and, and, and getting people to really move forward on, on their own recycling journey.